...meeting to order, and I'd like to welcome our two new members, David Martin and Dean Charter. Welcome aboard. Are there any citizens' concerns?
Good evening. John Richards, Seventy-two Skyline Drive. I've been a resident of Acton for twenty-six years and a United States citizen for something less than that. And during that time, I've regularly attended town meetings and seen the use of citizens' petitions generally judiciously, sometimes effectively, sometimes time-wasters, but a part of the democratic process. I just wanted to express my concern. I know you have little authority over doing anything about this. But I felt that whilst the moderator did an excellent job at moving through it at town meetings, sort of having seven out of fifty-one warrant items from the same group of people as citizen petitions was not an ideal process, and I fear that if we sort of go down that rabbit hole, we'll end up with lots of individual single-item citizen petitions, and, you know, and it runs the risk of town meeting fatigue, and ultimately coming from a country which is wrestling with an indicative vote that's causing a lot of problems at the moment. Indicative votes can cause a lot of problems if they get passed through fatigue. So I have contacted my legislature representatives, but I would just like to raise the prospect that I think whatever the Board of Selectmen can do to try to persuade people to, at the very least, only present a single omnibus citizen petition. And I don't know if there's any advice from other boards that could help in this matter, but I do fear for the future if this judicious use turns into a overuse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kayla Moran, Eighty School Street. I don't know if you know, you probably do, that the P E L for the Piper Road Lane has been put before the zoning board for May. And I wanted to make sure that you knew that there was an information session this coming Wednesday night that is being sponsored by A C H C, which means to me that perhaps they're trying to flip it to a lip. And I'm wondering if there's any time on your agenda in the next few meetings that we could maybe come to you and talk a bit about this. So that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy Ryman, Seven Bromfield Road. I also have some concerns about town meeting. My concerns are numerous, but I will try to keep this brief. So defenders of open town meeting hail it as the purest form of democracy. But this is only true if all potential voters are able to access that system equally. And as it is, participation in town meeting is impeded for a number of different groups. The largest of these is parents of young children who have to hire a babysitter if they want to attend. And if town meeting is five hours a night, spread over two nights, that's ten hours of town meeting. A babysitter costs between ten and twenty dollars an hour, at between one hundred and two hundred dollars to participate in town meeting. That is not small change for many families. And even if it is, no one should have to pay to exercise their right to vote. And the kids' movie night is a nice gesture, but it fails to solve the problem for parents whose children are too young to attend or whose children need to go to bed earlier than that. And even the parents who do take advantage of the movie night have to pick their kids up at nine. So they run the risk of sitting through endless debate on a measure that they ultimately may not even get to vote on because they have to pick up their kids before it comes to a vote. But it isn't just an issue for parents. Town meeting is also inaccessible to people whose work schedules don't conform to the typical nine to five. This includes police officers, firefighters, hospital workers, retail workers, food service workers. I myself am a public librarian. The public library, open till nine. And many of us don't have the flexibility to change our work schedules. And then, of course, there are people who are out of town, whether for business or pleasure. If you're traveling, you're just out of luck. And I know that a number of improvements have been made over the years to make town meeting more accessible for people with disabilities. But it remains entirely closed off to people whose disabilities prevent them from leaving their homes. And caregivers for the disabled are also affected. The challenges they face are similar to those of parents with the need to find and pay for a qualified caregiver. But qualified caregivers for the disabled are hard, much harder to find than a run-of-the-mill babysitter. And with all of these barriers in place, the decisions that are made at town meeting cannot accurately represent the will of Acton's voters. And I've heard defenders of the current structure say that all of these barriers can be overcome if somebody's sufficiently motivated to show up, and that the people who do show up, well, they must just care more about local government than the folks who don't. And this is simply untrue. Even in Acton, not everybody has the means to pay a babysitter. Not everybody has flexibility in their work schedule. Not everyone has the basic ability to leave their house. And we cling to this system because of its storied history. I mean, Acton held its first open town meeting in seventeen thirty-five. Seventeen thirty-five, when only white men were eligible to vote, and the total number of those voters was fewer than a hundred. We've come a long way. But town meeting has failed to keep up with the reality of life in the 21st century. And it needs, if we want to preserve this form of government, it needs significant changes if it's going to remain viable. The most obvious of these, to me, would be an option to participate remotely. And I had been told in the past by Peter Ashton that state law did not allow remote participation, but this is incorrect. In fact, it specifically provides a legal framework, which was passed in 2012 with the stated goal, quote, "to promote greater participation in government." And all of you on the board should have received via email a copy of that statute. I sent it three or four days ago. And I feel that as selectmen, it's incumbent upon you to explore every possible means of eliminating these barriers to participation. And if, despite the fact that it's a New England institution, if there's no way to make town meeting accessible for the entire population of some fifteen thousand or so registered voters, then it just needs to be replaced with a different system, such as a representative town meeting. There are many possible avenues that you can explore for reform, but maintaining the status quo is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just make one brief comment. I certainly agree that town meeting could be improved, and we should look for ways to do that. I just got to say, I read your email. The statute you're citing, the open meeting law, I don't believe applies to town meeting. I don't think that town meeting is a board or a committee that's covered by the open meeting law. So I'm not sure that legally, the remote participation applies to town meeting. So I just, let me just make that comment.
If I could just follow on to Peter's comment for a second. Town meeting are not, is not subject to the legal requirements of open meeting law. It's not governed by open meeting law. It's one of the exceptions.
I didn't understand that. Thank you. In that case, I suppose that I feel it should be done away with. If there's no way for us to vote, for people to participate remotely, if they're unable to leave their homes, then it simply isn't a viable form of government.
Well, if I could ask you-
Let's not have a dialogue?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm good. I'm done.
Hi, my name is Jody Bromberg, Sixteen Wilson Lane. I wanted to second everything that Amy has just said, notwithstanding the comments about the open meeting law. Like many families, we moved here two years ago with our then-almost-kindergarten sons. And my first town meeting was a special town meeting for the school. And the reason that is important here tonight is the one thing that Amy didn't mention that I want to mention here is that right now, the system that we have with the open town meeting depends on people's disenfranchisement or on them not showing up. But we have, as best as I can tell from the town meetings I've been here, been attending in the last couple of years I've been here, between three and seven percent of the registered voters in Acton, the fifteen thousand people who are registered, show up for a town meeting. And the one town meeting, that first town meeting that I went to, the special town meeting voting on the new elementary school buildings was, seemed like it pushed our capacity to the very brink. In so much as I dropped my two kids, and my wife and I sat there waiting for town meeting to begin at seven o'clock, and it didn't, it didn't begin at eight o'clock. I think my best recollection is it began somewhere about eight-thirty, quarter to nine, because we just couldn't manage the thousand or so people who actually showed up. So what would we do if two thousand people showed up or three thousand people show up? If a quarter of the registered voters in Acton actually showed up for the town meeting, we wouldn't be able to start for days because we just simply don't have the capacity. So I think it really is incumbent on the Board of Selectmen here to explore every possible alternative. Because right now, you're depending on a system that depends on folks being disenfranchised and disconnected. Thank you.
Thank you. John, do you have any updates?
Yes, thank you. Just a few items. Just wanted to make sure to call everybody's attention to the April edition of the Municipal Monthly. It was enclosed in your tax bill this month, but it's also available online like every other month is. So I encourage you to check it out and tell your friends. We, there is a housing forum here Wednesday night. I believe it's at seven. It's in this room. There was supposed to be a Vernal Pool Meeting here that night. That Vernal Pool Meeting has been moved to the Public Safety Center. So I believe if you're looking for that, that's where it is, in the training room. We have relaunched the Minuteman Bike Share Program. So if you wanted to grab a bike at the train station and go grab an ice cream in West Acton, you can do so. And then you can ride back and go to Manert if you'd like. It's a great program, so we hope that people really take advantage of it this year. I just wanted to say, I attended the first class of the Citizens Police Academy that the Police Department held last week. It's a multi-week program, and it's, they have over thirty-five attendees, and it's, looks like they're going to have a lot of fun. So, great job for the Police Department. You all were there, but we announced the Employees of the Year, James McCray and Mike O'Rackill. Thank you for supporting and approving those employees. They do a great job. We got some other news today on another award in our Police Department. Detective Keith Campbell was awarded the Exceptional Service Award for 2018 at the Mass Juvenile Police Officers Association Conference. So that's great. Great job, Detective Campbell. And I look forward to working with you all. Thanks.
Okay, reorganization of the board?
I move that to nominate Joan as our chair for the next year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
I'll move to nominate John Benson for vice-chair for next year.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to nominate Dean Charter to be our clerk for the next year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, do you want to change seats?
We have assigned seats.
Well, I would like to give my thanks to John Mangereddy and John Benson for organizing the Kelly's Corner workforce, and to Kristen and Chris for all of the presentations they made and all of the committee members who participated. It was at least a forty-year motion to get this going. And John came in and organized it and did a spectacular job. And I was delighted to see the number of people who did turn out at town meeting to vote in favor of it. So thank you very much. Now we need to go through the list of committees and board assignments. And as we do, I'd like you to think about the different boards and committees, and which ones we can combine and which ones are still viable, because there are quite a few. Rivers Street Master Plan, Peter?
Yeah, I'm chairing that committee, so I'm happy to, just got a lot of work to do, and we're going to be moving forward, so I'm happy to continue that.
Okay. And the Acton Community Housing Corp., John?
Yes, I look forward to becoming the liaison and taking the position that Janet Adachi held for a number of years.
Okay. Acton Community Housing Corp. Oh, that's what we just did. Acton Housing Authority, Peter?
Yeah, I'll continue that.
Okay. Acton Leadership, that would be myself and John, Chair and Vice Chair. Acton Nursing Service, I'll take that. Acton TV, John?
Yes, I'll continue on.
Okay. Acton Water District, Dean?
Yes, thank you.
A B Cultural Council, Dean?
Yes.
Regional School Building, Peter?
I'm a member of that committee, and I'm happy to continue.
Okay. And the Acton Regional School District Committee, David?
Yes, that's good.
Okay. Board of Appeals, John?
Yes, I'd like to take that on.
Okay. Board of Assessors, John?
Yeah, I'll continue.
Board of Health, David?
Yes, good.
Okay. Cable Advisory Committee, John?
I'll continue.
Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Dean?
Yes, thank you.
Cemetery Commission, Joan? Community Plan, Acton Twenty-Twenty, Peter?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm happy to take it. I'm not sure how active that committee is. I guess we need to sell some plans to try to start drafting a new master plan, so I'm happy to take that.
Okay, so we may rename it?
Yes, the Twenty-Thirty, Act of Twenty-Thirty, possibly. We'll have to see.
Okay. And Community Preservation Committee, Peter?
You know, I've been on the committee for a number of years now. Dean is also a member of the committee. I was a selectman member on the committee, which the bylaw requires. I think Dean was appointed as a at-large member of the committee. We don't need two selectmen on the committee. I, there's, there's an associate member who's been on the committee for a long time. I'm happy to step aside and let Dean continue as a selectman's appointee to the committee. And that would open up a slot for the associate to move up, and then there would still be two associate memberships available. And that's a pretty popular committee, so I'm sure they'd be filled. But I'm happy to step aside and let Dean continue.
And Dean is nodding. He's willing?
Yep, looking forward to it.
Okay. Conservation, Conservation Commission and Land Stewardship Committee, Dean?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Council on Aging, Dean?
Yep.
Wait a minute, that looks like John, doesn't it?
Yeah.
But I-
Yes, Dean indicated a willingness to take that on.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's fine with me.
Commission on Disabilities, Joan? Design Review Board, Dean?
Yes, thank you.
Dog Park Committee, Joan? Economic Development Committee, John?
Like to continue, yes.
Finance Committee, John?
I'd like to continue.
Green Advisory Board, Peter?
Yeah, I'll continue that.
Okay. Health Insurance Trust?
Yep. That one meets in the morning, so that's easy.
Okay. Historical Commission, David?
Yes, good.
Historic District Commission, Dean?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Kelly's Corner, John?
Yes.
Okay, hold on. Yeah, you had a checkmark under my name, but I'm happy, John's, you've been doing it right now.
Right. That was a mistake, I think. Magic and M A P C, that's me. Minuteman Regional School District, Dean?
Yes.
Morrison Farm Committee, David?
Yes.
Open Space Committee, David?
Yes.
Planning Board, Joan? Recreation Commission, David?
Yes.
Self-Acton Train Station, David?
Yes.
Senior Tax Relief, me. Sidewalk Committee, Peter?
That's a committee that needs to be reorganized, but I'm happy to continue to work on that, yeah.
Okay, because I was thinking, we have the sidewalk, we have transportation, we have the M B T A, the Lowell Regional Transit, and I think there's a fifth, oh, self-Acton train.
Right.
So we need to think about how we can consolidate some of that.
Okay, I'm happy to have discussions around that and see what we can come up with.
Okay. Transportation Committee, Joan? Volunteer Coordinating Committee, Peter?
Yep.
And Water Resource Advisory Committee, Joan? West Acton Sewer Committee, David?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we should look at some of these committees, because some only have two members, Sidewalk Committee, and think about how we can consolidate what purposes are of the different committees.
Yeah, I agree with that. We had a public forum here on sidewalks, and Cameron Cousins, who was the Chair of the Sidewalk Committee, was here. And we did talk about reorganizing that committee and either combining it with another one or changing the focus of it. So we'll be working on that.
Any other comments, John, Dean?
Nope.
I guess you were also, you were the liaison to the Acton Memorial Library-
Yeah, the two libraries.
And the West Acton Citizens Library.
As a former librarian.
All you.
All right. Town Meeting Review. Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, before we get off reorganizing the committee, I was wondering if we, going forward, we wanted to begin referring to ourselves as the Select Board rather than the Board of Selectmen. Many other towns have done this. It seems that, you know, the Board of Selectmen is an anachronistic term. So I just wanted to bring that up.
I mean, I had that same thought, but I would suggest we wait until we have our goal-setting meeting. That might be an issue we would talk about as part of initiatives going forward.
Good. All right. We'll put that on the agenda for the Goals Setting Meeting. Okay. So... Town Meeting Review.
Yes. So we had two nights of town meeting. It was a lot of great dialogue and discussion about issues and concerns of the town. We have a lot of work to do from all the results of the meeting. We have a budget, a new budget. We have a bunch of new projects to work on. We're, you know, just going down quickly through Kelly's Corner. We'll continue to work on the design and the next phases of that process. The Maple Street Acquisition, we're scheduled to close on that on July first.
Okay.
And so we'll have a couple of items of due diligence that we're doing, and that should go well, hopefully. And we're also, we're working with our legal counsel on all the different actions that we need to take related to the authorizations and the next steps. So I think it'll be an ongoing process as we can, as you meet throughout the spring and summer to work on how each of these articles are to be implemented. But overall, it was a, it was a great town meeting and great results.
Good. Under the operating budget, one of the citizens asked about repairing the road at Concord Muse?
Yes, that's, we've, I've talked to the Public Works about that. That's a, it's a sunken area around some infrastructure that was installed as part of that development a few years ago. And our Public Works folks are trying to find a good time to do it, because it needs to be done off-hours. So that, it'll be done well before the FY twenty budget.
Okay.
Probably before the end of the month, if I had to guess.
John? Yeah?
Mr. Richards, thank you for your comments. As I pointed out in a reply note to your email, the ten-signature requirement for a citizen petition is a state law. It's nothing that we could handle in Acton. To Amy Ryman and Judy-
Jody.
Jody. A couple of comments on the disenfranchisement argument. If you went to a representative town meeting, the way that would work is you'd have a certain amount of elected representatives per precinct, say between five and ten. So you'd have anywheres between, you know, thirty and sixty town meeting members. And the discussion at town meeting would solely be limited to those thirty to sixty people. If you went and attended, you would not be able to speak. You wouldn't be able to vote. So that would be really a, you know, a true disenfranchisement of a long New England tradition. There have been great strides over the years that have, to improving town meeting. The League of Women Voters was very instrumental in a lot of that. We have now consent calendars, which move items through with speed. We have pro and con microphones. Speakers used to be able to go on forever. And it was incredibly, I went, when I was a young guy and would have to listen, I just found that very, very hard. And I think we've all struggled, you know, with late nights, you know, getting out of there at eleven or eleven-thirty. And we don't start articles anymore unless we agree after ten-thirty. But we've all struggled with those few nights of staying up late, going home very wound up, not getting much sleep, and staggering into the workplace the next day. And, you know, that's just kind of, you know, you know, part of the tradition. I think we've all had a scramble with babysitters and how we accommodate that. Now that it's on television, you could actually follow it and break out and go to the articles, you know, that you're interested in and, you know, and stay through that. But to address your point about remote participation, that is really tricky. It's a lot different than attending, you know, a meeting at your office with people you're familiar with and other colleagues who are not available but call in from, you know, from other places. You all know each other. In something like this, how do you authenticate people who are calling in that they are who they say they are? I mean, I really tried to think about that over the, you know, course of the weekend. Couldn't come up with a, you know, with a satisfactory answer. And as I've watched it over the years, it's discouraging to sit up there and knowing all the work that John and Mark and town staff and, you know, this board and the other committees put into, you know, town meeting and get in there the first night, and three hundred people out of, you know, fifteen thousand voters are sitting there. That is discouraging. But what I, you know, what people come out is an issue of real importance, a school building, a new school building. The marijuana question drew well over a thousand people. We were able, through our outreach efforts on the Kelly's Corner Infrastructure Project, to have over two hundred more people there this year than voted for the supplemental funding article, you know, a year before. So it tends to be driven by the interest that a particular article, you know, drives in the electorate. But I, I agree with you. It's, you know, it's going to cost you more money, you know, to hire sitters. We've all done that. And, you know, it's- We've all done that, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's three or four nights a year that we, you know, you know, put out and, you know, you know, go through it. I have some additional comments on Article 38 Kmart as to where we'd go from here, but if I can reserve on that and let others speak.
Dean, do you have any comments on town meeting?
I, yeah, admittedly, the, the turnout is always sort of disappointing. Years ago, town meeting would run sometimes five or six nights and it'd be split out over two weeks, and that was really arduous. So I think there's been some improvements there, but certainly, I've, since receiving your, your email, I've certainly given it some thought about what can be done to make it more efficient and, and more inclusive. And I, kinda coming up empty at this point. The other issue with the remote participation is that, reading through the law, if you're going to do the remote participation with any kind of board or committee, all the votes have to be roll-call. And if, I'm not sure how that would be administered in a town meeting. You'd literally have to call the name out of every single voter in the room. And you get through two or three votes with that at 300 people on a roll-call. It could really lengthen it. So I, I would not discourage you, but I think it's, it's a problem that we've wrestled with. I've heard the discussion and, and possibilities of representative town meeting as far back as probably 30 years ago. So it's a recurring theme, but I don't think we've come up with any solution. But certainly, if you come up with any, any other thoughts on that, I'm sure the board would be eager to hear them. Thank you.
Dean?
I, I think the reason that town meeting is considered such a cherished way of doing things is it's, it's similar to the Greek Republic, where any citizen who wanted to participate could actually express their opinion and vote on how they should be governed. I'm not, that's tradition to New England. Goes back to the pilgrims who decided, you know, "We don't need bishops telling us what to do. We don't need a pope. Our relationship with God is what is the most important thing." The individual relationship to God, that's really where town meeting came out of originally. The individual citizens' input into town government. You know, in other states, I'm not sure how they do it. A lot of states have county government, but it's probably like the state government here, where the elected officials make the decisions. They set the budget. Citizens may have input through committee hearings or whatever, but they don't have any input on the final vote on what the budget is. That's the elected officials that make that decision. Here, it's the citizens who vote on that. Not to say that town meeting has, doesn't have a lot of problems. Some towns hold town meeting on Saturday. I'm not sure if that would allow for more participation. I think our town meeting is set by the Town Charter as the first Tuesday in April. We have a charter that is, was adopted through a Home Rule petition, where we, town meeting adopts the charter, and it goes to the state government, has to be passed by the House and, and the Senate, and signed by the governor. There's another way to come up with a town charter through the state statutes that requires a charter commission be put together and study it and then make recommendations. Possibly, we could set up a committee that would look at ways of improving participation in, in town meeting and try to get more people involved. So that's possibly one suggestion. I don't know whether people would agree with that or not, but any ways that citizens might have for us to kind of improve or, or draw more people to town meeting and allow better participation, we're certainly open to.
David, comments on town meeting?
Yes, I just have a, a comment on the, on the citizens petitions that, was it, was it Mr. Richards? That, that, I've heard other people say that they would like to ask our representatives to change the number of signatures required there. I don't know how you get in touch with all the people that would like to do that, but a lobbying effort on, you know, into our representatives, I think, might, might, might help make that change. I mean, given the population of Acton, 10 signatures is a very small number. It might have been appropriate when we had 100 people at the first town meeting, but now it's a very low number. It's, it, it takes 50 signatures to run for office in the town, for example. So maybe that's a better number.
I'd like to thank Eva and her crew. I think they do an amazing job. And after our difficult meeting that you referred to, all of that has been improved and revised, and people can come in much more easily.
Madam Chair?
I had a, just a further comment on one of the articles, Article 38, if I may have a few minutes.
Yeah.
This relates to Article 38, the Kmart parcel article, but I think it was the last article that was subject to, to discussion. I think as a board, we've gotta get out in front on the future of the Kmart parcel. And I would like to see us take a, a direct approach to Stop &amp; Shop and ask for a sit-down meeting with them, you know, how we might work together on the redevelopment of the parcel. And I think it's an issue that the Select Board, you know, needs to own and take the lead on and not just hand it off to, to John and, and staff and, and say, "Run with it." I, you know, it's similar to what we did over the last year with the Kelly's Corner Infrastructure, where we really did take the ownership and the lead on it. So, you know, I would be, you know, very happy to join with John and, and reaching out to, to Stop &amp; Shop and request a meeting with them and see how we might work together on the redevelopment of the parcel. Now, you know, not to, trying to manage expectations, they may have some very different ideas as to what we may have. I mean, they would see what's, how they could, you know, maximize the value of the, the parcel to them, but I think it's, it's worth a, you know, a sit-down. And perhaps at our next meeting, so we might have some, if we choose to go that way, have some direction, we discuss, you know, openly, the big comment that we received throughout the Kelly's Corner Infrastructure outreach was, "Do we want 150 residential apart, rental apartment units on that parcel?" Because that's something that Stop &amp; Shop is gonna wanna see. And I think if we're gonna have any discussion with them, we as a board have to be clear where we stand on that issue. And I think the other piece we've gotta stand up on is getting to our 10% on 40B. I think later this evening, the Zoning Board of Appeals will be granting the comprehensive permit to the Avalon 2 development, which will qualify us for a two-year safe harbor status, giving the, the Board of Appeals the power to deny any comprehensive permit during that two-year period. And we really should take full advantage of that two-year period to move along the Powder Mill project. That's a, a joint project with Maynard that would add 180 units. And identify parcels and seek out developers where we may be able to add rental units, because that's the way you, you get to your 10%. And that would be really the most effective way to fend off any potential 40B on the, on the Kmart parcel. So again, this is something I think we as a board need to take the leadership role on. Because one thing that we have to take into account, with 40Bs, they reset every 10 years. From the 2010 census, there were 8,475 housing units in Acton, so 10% would give us 848 as our, as our threshold. We're at about 569 now. It's anticipated when the reset occurs in early 2020, based on the census, that'll be 9, 9,268 housing units, so we'll have to up our 10% to about 926. So those are two things I think we really, I strongly feel we need to take the lead on. It will be a lot better off as a town with that effort.
Is that a motion?
I think the, you know, you know, the spirit of it is, let's get out in front. Maybe we could have a discussion for a few minutes on it.
Dean?
Yeah, I, I certainly second what Selectman Benson has said. You know, that, that's from such a focal point for everything with Kelly's Corner and, and the Kmart parcel just sort of looms over everything. So I think certainly reaching out to them and, and looking at what can be done that, that would be acceptable with the town is probably a good step. So I definitely would, would second any motion along those lines. And just generally, for the affordable housing, it's, affordable housing is something that everybody needs. The, we have so many problems with our workforce not being able to live in close proximity to their jobs, either working for the town or working for some of the industries here in town. I think whatever we can do to encourage affordable housing in appropriate locations is something we should be behind.
Peter, comment on the Kmart?
I think those are both worthy goals. I'm not sure we need a motion, but certainly support them.
David?
So, no, I, I agree with those as well. What would the motion be to allow John and, John to reach out to Stop &amp; Shop?
Yeah.
See if there's a meeting of the minds?
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Anything else from town meeting? Dean, David, Peter?
No, nothing.
All right.
Is public allowed to participate in this part of the meeting?
We welcome your comment.
So regarding Article 38, I think a big part of what went wrong at this year's town meeting is that it was announced on the first night that no new articles were going to be taken up after 10:30. And Mr. Benson, like you said, people have the option, if they'd like, to follow along at home, watch it on TV, and show up when the articles that they feel strongly about are coming up for a vote. Granted, both adults in a household can't always do that, but sometimes at least one of us can manage it. And, and that's what I was doing, waiting for Article 38, which I felt strongly about. And I, I have friends and acquaintances who I know were doing the same thing. And around 10:25, knowing that no new articles were going to be taken up after 10:30, we said, "Well, I guess this one's not gonna happen till tomorrow," and we all went to bed. And there were a great many people who would have shown up to vote on Article 38 had they realized that it was going to come up for a vote on the second night of town meeting. But because of the structural problems of town meeting and because of the fact that we were misinformed about no new articles being taken up after 10:30, we all missed that opportunity. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion before we move to the consent? Okay. And for David and Dean, if there's an issue you wanna hold? So consent item six, accept gift recreation department $1,000 from Protech to support the 219 Summer Concert Series of Special Events. Seven, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Andrew White, Nara Park, May 4th, 2019. Eight, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Friends of the COA, Acton Senior Center, 30 Sudbury Road, May 14th, 2019. One-day alcoholic beverage license, Ryan Di Oreo and Rebecca Kosia, Exchange Hall, June 29th, 2019. 10, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Consia Lamaken, Nagog Village Clubhouse, April 13th, 2019. 11, request for sign placement, Acton Women's Club, 505 Main Street. 12, board to declare surplus vehicles and materials, Department of Public Works. 13, general bylaw E39, Public Way, Obstruction/Destruction Engineering Department.
Hold.
Okay. 14, committee appointment, Sam Bijou, full member of the planning board. And 15, selectmen reports. So is there a motion for items six through 12 and 14 and 15?
So moved.
So moved.
Second, Dean?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Peter, to your hold?
I think that it takes 90, this has to go to the A G. Any bylaw changes have to go to the A G for approval. They have 90 days, I believe, to approve the bylaw. So I would just add to this motion that upon approval by the Attorney General's Office, the bylaw would take effect. I'd also like to see memos. Anytime a street is opened, at least a memo from the, from the engineering department. I don't know, do you agree with that, John, that we need to have the A G approve that?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to see a memo from the engineering department anytime they approve a street opening. Particularly, I know you've been very involved in the repairing the leaks, and so that we're just up to date on, on where our street openings are happening and, you know, particularly any leak repairs that are going on, we would know about. Could go into extra information, part of the packet or whatever.
I would certainly be prepared to provide a, a regular update on the ones that happened between meetings, if, if that works, rather than a separate memo for each one.
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can, we can do that.
Okay, so, but for this particular article, I would just add that upon approval by the Attorney General, there may be one or two that might come up before the A G approves it, and we would still have to be involved, so.
Can I consider second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.